Call the July 22, 2020 City Council meeting to order, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Here.
Solner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Yes, here.
Jade Pyros-Carvalo?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Paul, are you giving our prayer this morning?
I am.
Well, thank you.
Join me in prayer. Lord, thank you. Thank you that we can come to an all-powerful God with our needs. We thank you that you supply our needs daily. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our national and state leaders. We pray for wisdom for the members of this governing body as they seek to do what's in the best interests of our citizens. Lord, we continue to seek healing, seek healing around the world for this global problem with this pandemic. We know that you have us in your hands. Lord, we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, and for the love and the mercy you've shown to us. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 Okay, next item, please.
A proclamation for Emancipation Day.
Okay, and I do not see the proclamation. Here it is. Found it. I'm gonna sign that real quick to Jada before I present it.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay. Whereas on January 1, 1863, President Lincoln proclaimed that all slavery be abolished. And whereas a constant struggle has been going on to accomplish the goals of that proclamation to bring true freedom to an oppressed people. And whereas in 1935, Aaron Johnson along with James Woodson and Lester Harrison were members of the Kansas Lincoln Day Club of Hutchinson that sponsored the 10th Annual Emancipation Program. And whereas in 1936 in Hutchinson, the Emancipation Proclamation Day Celebration Committee, a nonprofit organization, was organized to arrange proper and fitting activities in honor of emancipation. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyros-Carvalo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 1, 2020 as Emancipation Proclamation Day in the City of Hutchinson and urge the entire community to help celebrate this important occasion. The Emancipation Day celebration is something that's been celebrated for so long in our community and it's incredible that we still have the ability to gather in that leadership that's been shown over decades. So really excited to hear about the activities and did you want to say a few words?
I'll just briefly share that those who are interested in participating, you can find the Facebook page listed. It shows all the activities and all the locations of things that are happening. The emancipation event starts on the 30th with the grand opening of the Chester I Lewis Plaza and concludes on August 1 with a picnic at the Stringer Fine Arts Center. Again, the emancipation page you can find on Facebook, so you can see all the activities, see the pictures and all the fun stuff that's gonna happen for that weekend. Thank you.
Hey, to Jada, really quickly, on, you said the picnic's gonna be at Stringer?
Uh, yes, it's gonna be at the Stringer Fine Arts Center at HCC. Most of the activities at Stringer will be happening outside. They will serve the lunch and then ask people to have, uh, kinda take a chair outside and enjoy the band that's gonna be performing.
And so that'll happen immediately following the parade?
Um, that happens at 1 o'clock, I believe.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, thank you so much for that clarification. Okay, next item, please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
Todd, would you like to describe how we're gonna handle this?
Well, we don't have anybody calling in. Uh, if you do want to call in, the phone number is 620-694-2610 and it'll ask you for an access number and that's 1354. Uh, looks like Natasha Russell just called in, so I'm going to unmute the phone here and let her speak. This is an interactive conversation, so she should be able to hear you. Oops. Technology, I, I know, I should be better at it than this.
Please enter your conference.
Natasha, are you there?
I am.
Uh, would you let the council know if you can't hear them if, if they, uh, after you speak?
Um, okay, well, I'm, all I have is my telephone and so I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to talk and also watch on the, on my smartphone.
Yeah, you, you should be able to hear them on the phone like you hear me. Uh, so I need you to give your name and address, please.
Natasha Russell, 8 South Nelson, Hutchinson, Kansas.
And go ahead with your comment.
I am calling in support of the full-time, the filling of the full-time human relations officer with a reminder to the city council that when the officer was hired on a part-time basis, a commitment was made to, 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 uh, be shown the need for a human relations officer in spite of the fact that the officer is called for by city ordinance. And so to bring the city into compliance with its own city code and its own human relations ordinance, I believe that it is crucial and important that having had over a year to see that the human relations officer who was hired on a part-time basis at the behest of city council needs to be able to go ahead and hire that person on a, or that position, fill that position on a full-time basis as called for by city ordinance and, uh, and fulfill its contractual duties to the law and to the city of Hutchinson.
Natasha, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, well, I wanted to thank you for calling in with your comments. I know I've received several emails about this particular issue as well, um, all in favor of funding that position at, at full-time. Did the other council members have any comments or questions, Natasha?
I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you as far as volume is concerned.
Okay. I was just-
What was the question?
Oh, I was just asking the council members if they had additional questions, um, of you. Are you, are you currently chairing the Human Relations Commission still?
Yes, I am.
That's what I thought, okay. Well, certainly thank you for your service on, on that commission and for your comments. You know, I think I made my position clear during the budget session on this. I'd like to see that position filled at, um, full-time, too.
Yes, you did, and I really appreciate that. I believe that you made some extremely important points.
Okay, further comments or questions?
On behalf of, on behalf of the City of Hutchinson, a, the, the value of supporting anti-discrimination is, is crucially important. The Human Relations Commission and the Human Relations Ordinance, uh, is supposed to be, by the letter of the law, in support of anti-discrimination in housing, public accommodations, and employment for all protected classes. And the expansion of duties that was talked about during the budget hearing, I believe is adequately and more than adequately covered by the white paper that was sitting in front of every one of the council members regarding the work that the human relations officer has been doing. In addition to the monthly reports that the human relations officer, uh, does prepare with regard to the increased number of cases that have been coming in since her, uh, since she filled the position on a part-time basis and even in spite of the fact that her hands are tied by the job description that she was given in terms of the difference between her job description and the human relations ordinance, which does have enforcement powers. So there is a little bit of frustration there and I believe that it is incumbent upon the city to come into compliance with the human relations ordinance that exists in city code, at the very least.
Okay. Well, thank you, Natasha, and you know, I, I do think that the city council needs to have a greater discussion of what we're gonna do with what the code-
Thank you.
What the code looks like. On the enforcement piece, we never did really take that out and I don't know if-
We didn't.
Now is the time to discuss how to revise that ordinance, but, um, it's certainly something that needs to be addressed.
I think it's a work in progress. I mean, I don't think anybody up here doesn't know the good that she's doing in the community, right? Like, I think we can all agree. I just think that we need a little bit more time to iron it out, we need to review the ordinance. And we just, I feel like it's been kinda rushed and I know that sometimes things in government work slow.
Ma'am, this, this is an issue that has been going on for years, years. It is not a rushed issue. The time is now, it is a crucial time and it is, it is not, it is, it is a matter of, uh, there, there has been kind of an assumption on the part of the community that the council would take the action that it said that it would take uh, back when they made the concession of hiring the human relations officer in a limited capacity, uh, back when they did. And prior to that, for basically 10 years, that position had gone unfilled in contradiction to the city's human relations ordinance. And that entire time entailed a struggle to get that position filled. So I really don't want to hear about this being a rushed issue in light of the facts and the evidence that has come forth that has been asked for by the city council of which I know, Ms. Bagwell, that you were not a part of that city council at the time that this appointment was made, that this hiring decision was made, but all of the, uh, reasons and the rationale that were given at that time have been met and more.
I'd like to say-
Please forgive me for speaking so stringently, I'm on a telephone. I can't tell if you guys can hear me because I can barely hear you.
Yes, um-
We, we hear you great.
Yes, we hear you fine, yes. Um, and like, I'd like to say, I didn't mean by any offense by saying it's rushed, but we are at the end of a budget session, we are dealing with COVID-19. We've had, um, uh, strained budget-
And so has your human relations officer been doing that? Extremely effectively, I might add, on behalf of the community.
And I'm not saying this isn't the discussion that we're not gonna have.
The budget, the budget hearing should have automatically understood that the, the funding for the human relations officer at a full-time level should have been factored in. I should not be having to make this call.
Thank you for your day, I mean, for your time talking. I, um, I'm not gonna say anymore.
I'm not either.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Okay.
I'll put that on hold.
Okay, is there additional discussion on that item or should we open it up for other calls?
Uh, I don't have any other calls.
I have to say, we're not done discussing this yet. I think she does a great job and, um, we need to discuss this more. When was this on the paperwork that the city, now I'm kinda trying to understand this a little bit. We did make a promise of that nature that we would fund a full-time, is that right?
I honestly don't think so.
Okay.
Do you, John?
I don't recall, um-
A firm commitment.
A firm commitment, I think this was a starting point.
Right.
Discussion, uh, to somewhat revive the Human Relations Commission and the officer.
Uh, personally speaking, um, if we were not in the financial situation that we are in at this point in time, I would be in favor of making it full-time. But we just knocked out, what, $5 million out of the budget?
Totals, but a little over $6 million, including the bonding and the jail fund. 6.4 million.
You know, unfortunately, we can't print money in the basement. I wish we could. So I'm, I'm reluctant to make a financial commitment that I'm not sure we can honor at this point in time.
Well, I would just note that the fiscal note on this is quite small when considering the fact that it's already being funded at 30 hours and we have outside private funding, um, being, you know, put forth for this too. So we're looking at maybe, you know, 20 grand to cover benefits and, you know, part of salary, or program expenses. Cause we have somebody willing to pick up the other part of the salary. So I think we knock that off of our ending balance and be done with the conversation.
Well, there is always that option.
You wanna say?
I didn't realize we were funding at 30 hours, I thought we were funding at 20.
Yeah, we're, we're funding at 30, um, but there's not a whole lot of programming dollars in the budget in addition to the-
You wanna say something, Jada, come on up.
Yeah.
And let me apologize that we're even having a personnel discussion about you in a public forum. I am so sorry that we're doing this.
And I thought it would be appropriate, I received a message this morning, I think Jeff, you received it, Jade, you received it, from Aubrey Patterson.
Oh, I, I hadn't seen that yet.
Um-
Let's get one from Aubrey.
Um, she, and I, I don't know, I feel like it's important for her statement to be heard in the public space given that she was kind of in, involved in, in the public funding piece of it. And I'm just gonna read it as, as is, I don't feel like there's anything that's, um, inappropriate here. Let me know, Aubrey, if you feel differently. Um, it indicates, "I watched the city council budget session with great interest last week. I was surprised to see that the council members appear to be in favor of a full-time HRO with residency requirements. It seemed we might be headed toward a funding partnership that would institutionalize the HRO position until John Dave Line asserted that no new city funds should be spent on it. With that decree and the resulting discussion, it appears that during this tough budget season, the seat, city council, the city will preserve the HRO at halftime as a contract position with no benefits, which is better than a full cut or a further watering down of the position. What it doesn't do is institutionalize the position and further demonstrate the city's commitment to protecting, convening, and celebrating all of its people. In lieu of the proposal, proposed funding for the HRO full-time position, the Community Foundation will continue conversations with local organizations that are promoting social and racial justice and look for other opportunities to support their work. We will also continue to seek opportunities to partner and support the city of Hutchinson in the future." That is from Aubrey Patterson. I felt that she, she kinda stated something that was important for us all to hear, um, out loud, especially, um, in public comment space.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, as we, we visited, uh, at our last budget meeting, and again, my position, um, I think was hopefully clearly stated, that with the constraints we have on our budget for 2021, I just in good conscience cannot, uh, what I can support, what I can support is, as I said last week, uh, the line item of $53,520. If there are other partnerships through the foundation or other entities that can bridge that gap, uh, that would allow for a potential full-time, uh, position, then I can support that. But I simply cannot support an increase in that line item above the $53,520.
So if we can come up with additional funding, you would be in favor of making the position full-time?
I would, yes. On the condition that we do not increase that line item, uh, that is currently before us.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, I think that gives us time to, I mean, if someone does fund it for, I guess, this Community Foundation, what, it was three years?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And what was the gap between what they were funding and what we would have to come up with for the first three years?
Their pledge was $20,000 per year with a maximum 36-month period. And so the additional cost to the city would be benefits, uh, cause currently that position does not receive benefits. That's what was negotiated upfront so that it would fall below the hour limitation on that. So what we put together as far as a trend line, we did a 10-year horizon projection that you all received. Um, and that showed some additional funds beyond, well, at, at month 37, it showed what the reality of that, uh, outlay was for that position going forward all the way through year 10. Cause it was a very unlikely scenario in staff's mind that at month 37, that would revert the position back down to part-time. So that obligation would likely survive and I wanted you all to be aware of that.
Well, yeah, what, the, the one, I'm okay with funding something, but I've looked at the numbers of the, of the breakdown of, um, you know, how many cases have been filed. So my main thing is I think we should revisit the ordinance and broaden the scope of duty to justify the full-time work. That's what my position has been the whole time. I think that, um, if we're going to justify the full-time, I think we need to, um, well, we would have to revisit the contract, right? I think we'd have to do an ordinance, a full, I think the scope of the job, the job duties, I think we'd need to, um, compile it in a way that really brings it to that full-time level. Now, if we had funding, I guess, that bridged that gap, I guess that would give us three years to iron out those details, you know? Surely the government could get it done in three years. I'd hope so, right? Do I think it's a full-time job right now? No. I think it's close, is what I'm saying. And I think that we need to revisit our ordinance and we need to revisit what we think a person in that position would be as an asset to the community. And I think that that discussion needs to happen. So until I know more about what I would feel would be appropriate for the scope, appropriate for the description, and, um, justifiable for the full-time position, I would need to know more about what that looks like before I can commit to wanting to fund it, right? Like, I, I would like to see where, um, of, um, what that would look like, I guess you could say. So that's what I meant earlier before I got interrupted, is I tried to say that, um, I just want to know more, I just want to talk more. I feel like it's being rushed right at the end of the budget and I just want to talk more about it before I commit to it because I'd like to see what that scope and those duties and the residency requirement and, uh, ordinance and all that prior to making that commitment. Does that make sense?
Well, let's talk a little bit about timing. So will we be, um, certifying the budget in the, at the next city council meeting?
We're gonna ask for a public hearing date to actually publish. And so I don't think it'll be at the next, uh, meeting, but the one after that, is my anticipation.
Well, there's no doubt, I think, it needs to be full-time, but the, where I'm struggling is we have to find the money to do it.
Okay.
All right.
Now, where, where, where are we gonna cut to, to, to fund this?
Our ending balance.
We, no, we could always consolidate inspections and planning committees.
Oh, goodness.
I'm just saying.
I, I thought we were under the premise that we would, uh, we would keep the budget whole and, uh, as long as we can keep that budget whole without decreasing our ending balance to the $4.1 million, I can support that, but anything beyond that, uh, I simply cannot.
But we did add two new positions, so we didn't keep the budget whole. We added two new positions in another department. So I, I think that's what's getting missed here. We make, we find my-
I do not want to mix those, those two issues and, uh, talking about those things in a public, uh, body here- council is serving. Those things ought to be referred to by our city manager with recommendations from him to us.
I understand and respect the role of the city manager, but we also represent the people. And we're not here to rubber stamp everything that comes before us. It's okay to question a few things. I don't think it's disrespectful. There's nothing wrong with productive conflict. So I think it's, I think it's inappropriate to not question things in the budget. That's arguably our biggest job.
I have one thing that adds to that, the comparison that you're making. That person did have to wait one budget year. And all I'm asking is the same for the human. I, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, but the Human Relations Commission has waited 10 years.
Well, it was...
For this position.
For where I'm sitting at, it was requested on the budget and it was deferred one year. This is being requested on the budget. To me, I guess I'm new, and all I'm asking is for it to wait, to be deferred till next year so we can go through the ordinance unless there's some other way that we could work and have five more meetings before we certify it on the budget.
I think we could have a scope, a broadened scope of duties by the next meeting, basing it largely off of the white paper that was presented to us by the commission with their thoughts on what that position should be expanded to look like. The funding piece, I don't know what we can do in two weeks, but we could try to see where we could forge other partnerships if it really is the money. If the money is the sticking point and the scope of duties with that residency requirement, that could all be ironed out. We can make things work if things are a priority for us. We've done that in other, with other items. We created this position out of ether. We didn't have any funding for it. It hadn't been filled for 10 years. So that's my position on it.
You might be a little bit honest, but I agree with you. I think we can do something in two weeks, see if we come back, see if we can get the money. If you can show me somehow where we can get the money, I think when this position needs to be full-time. But my holding staff is the money part of it. So if we can come up in two weeks and find out what we can do.
My main thing is the scope of duty and the residency.
Okay. I'm resourceful. I'm gone for a week this week, but that gives me one week. Okay. Any other comments on this item?
So we put this back on the agenda in the next city meeting, or what do we do? How do we do this, Mr. Jeff?
Well, as a point of clarification, the money, while it was discussed, the money in the three-year period is probably not the biggest hurdle for us to cross.
Okay.
It's not until you get into the period beyond 36 months that it has some significant budgetary implication to our future budgets. So the hurdle that you would be proposing based off the discussion and consensus that I've seen thus far would be the benefits piece to this. So I don't think the foundation was wanting to eat that piece of the expense going forward. They wanted to add and supplement like $20,000 a year to the existing outlay. So our immediate implication would be benefits. But then it's the years beyond year three going forward. Because I really don't think there'll be an appetite at any point in time in the future to reduce the position. My role was to inform you all of that future obligation that was likely going to follow with that decision. So...
But that's true of any position, not just this one. I mean, any position we fill is going to be the same commitment over the long haul. So the actual dollar amount on the benefits was what? I don't have that piece of paper in front of me.
I know we discussed that, and I...
I don't think we had calculated it yet.
You know, a lot of times with, with a role being contractual, you can modify the position up and down to accommodate the need. And I think that's the discussion that probably ought to take place. It's what is the need? And is that a dynamic need? Is it one that's dynamic enough that it needs to be volumetrically set with the contract every year? Or is it a position that should be slated and continued year after year?
Yeah.
So that was, that's part of the money piece of it that comes into play.
I did want to mention that I saw yesterday that Sedgwick County added another diversity and inclusion position to their staff. And I just think that you see that at every college, you see that at schools, you see that in a lot of different local government settings and cities of the first class and in larger counties, because people are recognizing the importance of this work. And if we're ever going to get to a space of complete equity and inclusion of all residents, that we're going to have to have dedicated resources to it. And, you know, maybe it's not a priority for a lot of us because we don't feel the pain of being in, you know, protected classes. I know some of us are as women or as, you know, Hispanic. But I think there's a lot, there's an intersection of a lot of things going on right now, and this work is important. And the city needs to come out strongly and support of it. I mean, I, I don't think the work is going to be in flux. I think that this is going to remain important, full-time type of duties for years and years and years to come. Until what, we get equity in this country? What, we're good for at least 100 years? Probably going to be enough work for 100 years.
Yeah, I, I just, like I said, I would like to see the scope of the duty, what kind of partnership is the city going to have with other groups within the city? Like, are we going to do work together in conjunction, you know, with some of the other groups in the city? That's what I want to see. I want, if I'm going to approve something, I want it, I'm a detailed-oriented person. I want to know, are we going to have partnerships with some of these other groups? Are we going to work together? It's kind of like how Hutch Rec kind of worked with the city on things, and the Housing Commission works with other, like, I really want a plan and an action.
Well, and I would mention that I believe the Human Relations Commission and the officer in that position has worked very closely with groups like Hutch and Harmony, with groups like the Youth NCP, with groups like, you know, the regular NAACP organization, with, you know, the college and law enforcement. I think that that's exactly what that position would be doing.
If you wanted the position to survive long-term, you would certainly not tie it to caseload. That has been a topic of discussion that has hindered, at least under my lens coming in, the need for the position. If you do base it strictly off of caseload, it's problematic for your review and for future governing bodies to review it.
I agree. I agree, Jeff.
And the one stone that gets thrown at it is, well, it's duplication of services already offered by the state. And that's true. That's a fact. We would be one of few cities across the state that would offer this position, even at a part-time level. But the full-time implication from what I'm hearing is one of kind of a shift from caseload to outreach.
Yes.
So if you're wanting outreach and you're willing to pay for it, and I think it was at the tune of $630,000, $640,000 over a 10-year spread for outreach, having that firm understanding at the time of making that formal decision, I think is very important to the sustainability of her work and that position. But you need to understand that it's not going to be based off caseload because it's not there.
No. Outreach and education.
Yes, ma'am.
I look at it as that combination as well.
Yeah, that's why I think that the ordinance and the job scope need to change. Because I don't think we necessarily, I don't think what we're wanting out of this position is what a typical human relations officer in the past would have done. Like you said, it is a duplicate of the state. A lot of cities don't have it because of that, that duplicate. I know that I've been reached out to about, in the past, about the concern that it is a duplicate and there's not much of a caseload for that person, and how are you justifying the budget based off of the caseload? And that's why I think it's super important that we need to talk about job description, the ordinance, and the scope of duties. Because I think we could create something that maybe isn't as, as new.
I agree. I agree. I think that that can be done by cross-referencing job descriptions for these diversity and inclusion positions in colleges and, you know, local government bodies. And I don't think that would be hard to come up with, especially using that white paper as a starting point. I thought that that had a lot of good points as far as what tasks would be driven forward by that position. So I don't know if that's something, Tom, would you, is that something you would normally put together? Or is that something the Human Relations Commission needs to come forth with recommendations to you?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I do have some information from Selina, but depth of the ordinance and all that I really don't have yet. But that's something we could work together, for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that something you think we could get by the next meeting?
Next meeting is when?
It's a good question. I don't even know what day it is.
August 4th or something.
Oh, yeah.
I think we could get it.
Primary day.
Maybe not everything, but yeah.
Yeah, that would be so great. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yep.
I'll work on the funding piece. Okay, are there additional comments on this? Or should we open it up for additional public comments?
We can open it up for additional public comments before moving on to the next item, I think, would probably be the best.
Todd, do you know if anybody else has called in?
There, I've been watching. There's nobody else on the line.
You know, moving forward, especially with the budget, a public hearing coming up, and I, I really appreciate your efforts on the technology piece. And I think this is an improvement over the budget session. But I think we really need to have the opportunity, provide the opportunity for people to come before the council, even if it's by appointment. I know that the county is still opening up their meetings for public comment, and some other counties I've seen that they are doing, like, you can call to make an appointment to get on the agenda for public comment. But what's the council's appetite for allowing people into the building to make comments?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Somehow, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Don't have any problem.
Should, do you have a preference for how that goes down, Jeff, for the safety of your staff?
I think largely if staff feels that there, or anybody attending the meeting for that matter, that it's being conducted in an unsafe manner, that's not in accordance with the governor's protocol, that they could exit the meeting, that's the prerogative. The mayor has quite a bit of discretion in the decorum of a meeting. I personally look at it as being a little bit different on two days of the month as compared to operations that are daily ongoing at the city. So if that's the wish of the governing body, certainly will accommodate it. I don't see it as being a big issue. If we have someone coming to the podium with their coffee incessantly without a face mask, I'm going to be out. I'm going to fire hose them on the way out. So those are the things we'll have to watch for, I think.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. We'll just plan.
Before we, before Mr. Cantrell started, John Deardorff asked us for recommendations on how we should reopen. And one of the recommendations that I made was that we have a staff person at the door that takes temperature and asks the seven questions before we let somebody in. And I would at least recommend that we do that as well as re-adjust the room so our distancing could be enforced.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And we can do, take all those measures before the next meeting.
Okay, that would be great.
And we would let one person in at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we did before. Yeah, thank you, Todd. That's, that sounds good. I appreciate that. Well, if there's, there are no other comments, let's call the next item, please.
I'm going to have to wear a mask.
Item six, consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Cyrus de Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7A, consider proposed memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Sorry to interrupt. Somebody did call in. Do you want to take that or do you want to continue?
Uh, let's go ahead and take it.
Okay.
I think it's best to be accommodating since there seems to be a wagon.
Please enter your conference access number.
Caller, this is Todd with the City of Hutchinson. If you could give your name and address, and the council's waiting to hear your, your comments.
My name is David Satella, and my address is 2900 Acre Roads, Hutchinson, Kansas.
Uh, go ahead, David.
Hi, I am Dave Satella, and I am a member of the Human Relations Commission, and I am calling, asking the council members to support the expansion of a full-time position for the Officer of Human Relations. And I am just, I just think that the City of Hutchinson needs to adhere to its own ordinance and follow the ordinance that it has. And, you know, we've been working with the JDA over the past months. I remember when I got appointed to the commission just last month, I heard from the council members how important this role of the officer was, and how crucial it was that we supported the officer and the commission. That was coming from the mayor, and it was coming from Councilwoman Bagwell. And so I'm just asking again to, as a Hispanic member, a Latino of this community who has faced discrimination, and we're not just doing this for people of color. We're doing it for gray friends. We're doing it for our friends who are people with disabilities. We're doing it for anyone who may face discrimination. I can tell you that. I was away from Hutchinson for a while, and I chose to come back to this town for a few reasons. But mainly because I knew we were investing in the arts, there's a strong arts community, and the strong vibrancy and pride of our town growing. But also because I knew we were investing in making sure that everyone was treated fairly, that everyone was treated with respect, that everyone was welcomed, and that the city would, would support the diversity and justice for our citizens. So I'm just asking all the council members to please consider this. We fear plenty from all of you. I just have a hard time thinking that the city's not, you know, following its own ordinance in a position that's treating everyone fairly, ensuring that everyone that works for the city or receives city services is valued and respected. And so I, again, just asking all of you to, to support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, David. Do you, do you see anyone else? Okay. Lynda, can you go ahead and call 7A?
7A, consider proposed memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Good morning, Council. Tom Sanders, Human Resources Director. As we went into negotiations in January this year, the FOP was the only bargaining unit that had a wide-open contract for 2021. You might recall, with our three other bargaining units, we just have reopeners for wages in 2021. We met formally three times with the FOP, and both sides kind of had a laundry list of issues that we were actively negotiating. And then, of course, COVID-19 hit and started getting into the transition issues with the new city manager. So both sides agreed to withdraw the respective proposals in April. And as part of that agreement, we offered the FOP Me Too clause for any wages that may be offered to other bargaining units in 2021. And again, this Me Too agreement basically provides the same merit increase matrix that would be negotiated with other bargaining units in 2021, whatever that should happen to be. Back in June, we received formal word from the FOP that the tentative agreement was agreed to. But as you guys also recall, last council meeting, I got a call first thing in the morning from the FOP president asking us to take it off the agenda because they had some administrative issues they needed to work through. Since got the go-ahead from them to put it back on the agenda. And so again, what you have in front of you today is pretty much a status quo contract except for the Me Too agreement. So also, just as a related aside, you might recall, with our other three bargaining units, because of everything that was going on in terms of uncertainty with city finances and COVID and all that kind of good stuff, we got their agreement to delay negotiations until this timeframe. And we actually did meet with them yesterday for the first time. And so... time. And so, we'll be talking with you later about how those meetings went as well. But basically, again, it's a pretty status quo contract, got the Me Too agreement for the FOP, and that's what we're looking, seeking approval for, for 2021 for the FOP. So, with that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
So, we're not actually looking at a wage increase for the 2021 budget anyway, are we?
My understanding of what's been submitted is zero increase and, you know, so that, that's, if that's ultimately where we land and that's, you know, the FOP, that's what they would get.
Okay.
Under this agreement, so.
Tom, would you refer to, and maybe you can cite that on that particular section, renegotiation of wage schedule and the factors that go into that?
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you review that with us?
Yeah, so, you know, every year we kind of benchmark with others, what other cities are doing in terms of wage increases, and we also look at market data from, from good reputable surveys and come up with a recommendation. Of course, the budget fits in with all that, and whatever is approved by the council is typically where we land. We look at both how much the ranges themselves are moving and it's also just overall pay increases for being in the job another year. Of course, in our system, it's also based on merit, so, does that answer your question?
Well, I was referring to the language here, renegotiation of wage schedule. The city and the FOP made by mutual consent agree to reopen negotiations over the wage schedule established by this article based on the contingencies, significant increase or decrease in assessed valuation of the city.
Yeah.
Creation or repeal of any state or local tax which significantly increases or decreases the city's revenues.
Gotcha.
A significant increase or decrease in local or sales tax collections or distributions.
Yeah.
And then finally, significant increase or decrease in funds available to the city through failure of state revenue sharing program.
Right, I'm tracking with you. I understand your question now.
Yeah, right.
So, that is an article, or portion of an article that was negotiated in a long time ago. To my knowledge, it's only been exercised once. And again, again, if we have a significant drop or the city council, we can go back to the unions and say, hey, listen, yes, we agreed to this or that, but we want to come back because of things have changed and our revenues have dropped, but we can go back in and renegotiate the wage schedule.
Okay, so there's an understanding by FOP of this?
Yes, yeah. So.
Thank you.
You bet.
Further questions of Tom or a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lot 7 bargaining unit for 2021. Authorized, the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris Day Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Steve, do you have anything?
Well, I knew you'd go to me first. Well, the only thing I got to say is this budget stuff was new to me, but I'm glad we got through it, and of course, we're not done with it yet. So, I hope we can come together and figure out a way we can do the, get the human resource position full-time with just, it's just part of money. I know we need it, and we need the position, but I'm also got, I got, as a city council member, I have to be of the money and the budget. We are responsible to the citizens, so, have to see what we can do. And other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. What about you, Sarah?
Um, the only thing I wanted to address is why I'm not wearing my mask over my face at the meeting. It's because this meeting isn't open to the public, and that's why you also see me very sit back from my seat and further away from everybody else. I just, there was a lot of confusion as to Steve has a mask, I have a mask, I wore it up here this time so people could actually see that I had a mask on me instead of front of me. Although that I believe that it should never be mandatory because I think even if something is what you're supposed to do, I never think the government should actually force people to do it. I'm still adhering to the rules for all the naysayers out there that seem to automatically assume if they can't see something, they know everything. So I just wanted to say that I will be wearing my mask, especially with the next meeting. Is it going to be public? So I will have to wear.
Yeah.
Is that right? On the next one, since it's public, I will have to actually wear my mask?
Yeah, that's probably the best.
That's true.
Okay, all right. So, just wanted to clarify and talk about that. Other than that, I think the budget season has gone well, and I look forward to Jade's tenacity on what we should see coming up next.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. John, you got anything?
No, I have nothing this morning.
What about you, Nancy?
No, nothing.
Okay, well, I wanted to reiterate what DeJada touched on this morning with the Emancipation Day celebration events and, and just remind everybody to check out that Facebook page and, and see if there's anything you can participate in safely. I, I hesitate to recommend anyone go to gatherings at this point with, with our numbers in the city rising on the virus side, so please observe all safety protocols if you choose to participate. And that's really all I had. Over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we had some brief discussion on the pledging requirements for specials and subdivisions. As we got into the discussion of phasing and public improvements and how those are intended to protect the city's interest in furtherance of those subdivisions developing on cue. I don't know that we got specifically into Quail Ridge, but I think that that is one that the mayor and I have had conversations with RCB Bank and also the developer on that particular one. Their quandary is perhaps not especially unique. What might make it unique is that the policy was enacted in 1994. This plat was certainly approved after that, I'm assuming. I don't see a date stamp on it, but several things. They have the understanding of the policy, so there's, I think we're clear on that. There was nobody that came into this. Everyone has clean hands with regard to that. Arguably, one could assert that they now have seven, or seven lots that are either complete or in the process of being under construction. Several of the lots are being cleared, four of the houses are built and occupied. And if you wanted to interpret this policy fairly loosely, one could assert that they have met a 20% threshold for construction. Well, that doesn't satisfy the policy that we have on the books because it's a 35%. But if you did want to adjust it down from the prior pledge, and it is currently still in force, it's in the amount of $340,000. RCB Bank believes that that initial amount was lowered from 538,000 because of lower construction costs coming in. I haven't verified that yet. That may, that may be the case. I know that they believe it's the case. So if you utilize that initial $340,000 number as the basis, and then you did the math on the 20% build-out, you would then come to a current-day letter of credit needed in the amount of $238,000. And that would be predicated upon a very liberal interpretation of this policy, a very liberal interpretation. If you wanted to play real loose math and just say go half of what we previously had, it'd be $170,000 pledge. But to be honest, I don't find any, there's really no scientific basis for coming up with that. That's just throwing mud at the wall. The 238 obviously would be a lower amount than what they currently have been required to pledge. I do think that it would continue to protect the city's interest. There does seem to be some movement in the subdivision. That would be staff's recommendation that a lower amount be considered in the approximate amount of $238,000. The, the policy is not a, it's not a terrible one. I've read, read it several times. There's a few tweaks we might be able to make to it that would make it better. So if you guys did want to direct staff with that task, we wouldn't necessarily have to rein it the wheel. So, we could look at that if you all so chose. That would be staff's recommendation on that. It does not require formal action based on the construction of the policy. It's not, it wouldn't require that, but consensus would probably be favorable.
Does that transfer?
Jeff, do you know the history of the Quail Ridge development?
A, a little bit.
When it was initially platted and what, what the, the phase of the new construction has been?
As far as the dates, I do not. As far as the history of the, the family that initiated construction, I've understood and heard that story and how someone passed away and was not able to complete subdivision. It was then handed down to the family, and they're not wanting to be developers. They would like to very much discount the lots and get it on down the road. So, that seems to be the resonating message that I've received from them and the bank. But as far as other history that's valuable in this conversation, no, I apologize, I don't.
Okay.
I really should.
So they've met a 20% threshold of, of the initial plot of?
If you loosely interpret this policy and you consider lots being cleared in the last 10 days as a basis for construction and reliance of construction that's surely to occur, that's the risk. Clearing a lot's not the same as a house having a C of O. And the policy dictates that the house have a C of O. So, clearly, that's a long way away as far as investment, clearing a lot to get to that, but it does show intent.
Does that transfer any liability or burden to the city? How does that work if, if we reduce that letter of credit requirement?
The, it definitely puts a different person on the hook for paying taxes for the bare lot, but what it doesn't do is take the property or the development to the stage of selling utilities and paying a, a tax rate on an investment that would be, the structure that would be sizable and appropriate to the lot under the zoning. So that's the piece that you don't have, and really what you are at risk on is somebody not paying the specials for the improvements that have been done by the city. Because I believe the way this was constructed, the city pretty much covered the front lug going in on the utilities. So, if, if somebody was in default on the lot and didn't pay their specials, someone might walk away from a property and not be at huge risk because it's a vacant piece of property. Whereas if they have a structure on it that's valued at $280,000 to $400,000, that's a different animal to walk away from. Arrangements would go on and against the property, so those would toll over time. And at some point, you'd likely be made whole when someone comes and courses the property, but that is really the, the risk in it.
You run that risk anywhere, actually.
I would agree.
Are you comfortable with taking it down to 238? Would that be a recommendation?
It, it is my recommendation. I would be comfortable in it. I, I like the fact that we can at least base it off some recent activity that's occurring, and this activity is occurring in the aftermath of all the COVID stuff. So, apparently, there's somewhere on the underwriting side of this that has a comfort level and potentially issuing for construction loans, and the bank seems to understand the dynamics of the subdivision pretty well also, although I, I think it's always good for the city to make their decision based on their own information that they have.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you looking into it, and I would be in favor of doing what we can to help this particular situation, help these people out without putting us, the city, at, you know, great risk. So if, if you're comfortable with lowering that, that letter of credit, I, I certainly would be, but I didn't know how the rest of the council felt about it.
So you, you essentially be lowering the letter of credit from 340 down to 238, is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Now, how did you arrive at that number? Because that's more than 20%.
I knew, I, I knew it was important to take notes how we did this. Okay, the original pledge was $340,000. RCB Bank informs that that amount was predicated upon the construction amount, which I agree with, that's what the policy's for. And you then take, based on percentage, the amount of completion that exists today. Well, that's where the quandary comes in. What do you determine to be completion? Because the policy's fairly clear, it, it's crystal clear, actually. It requires a C of O to be issued before you can qualify that to meet the percentage.
Yeah.
That's what we don't have. That's what the developer's estate is asking for some leniency on with the understanding that they are heavily discounting the lots to get them to move to make up for the specials that then have to be paid. So I, I don't think they have a huge profit motive at this point in the subdivision. More than anything, I think they want a departure strategy and to get development turning so that they can step out of it. But the math that was derived assumes that the lots that were being cleared last week would satisfy everyone's interest in interpreting this policy as receiving CFOs. That's the stretch. If you do assume that as being reliable, you then have seven lots that are either in the process of being cleared for construction or occupied. There's four houses that are built and being occupied currently.
There's four now.
That's right.
Okay, so there's actually.
So that takes it to seven, and then the math based off seven, in contrast to what the policy requires, is what drove that amount of $238,000 off the original pledge.
Okay.
So we use the original pledge as the true baseline, and the assumption that the bank's information to us is 100% correct, that that was a derivative of the cost of construction, which I don't have any reason to doubt.
Okay. Thank you. I was just simply taking 20% of the 340,000 and subtracting it, and I was coming up with a higher number than that, 238, so. Thoughts?
I agree. I like it.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Get it moving.
Yeah, just get it moving.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. And as far as the, returning the budget back to the governing body, at the next meeting, we will make, I, I think I understood a consensus from the discussion, that we will program the position for full-time and that we will include the cost of benefits into that. We are also going to reaffirm the commitment from foundation that they are good for the 36-months pledge going forward. We'll get that memorialized in advance of that meeting so we can bring it back and prepare it properly for you all to take further action on that. We will then ask for a, an official public hearing date on the budget so we can get that out the door and in compliance with the state's deadline.
Yeah, we need to confirm that by the 18th, right? Or what is, what is the final date?
I believe it's August 25 due to.
Oh, okay, so we have a little bit of.
So we've got, we've got time for compliance, but probably not a lot of time for work sessions and that kind of modeling.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
As far as executive session, do we have a estimated amount of time that we might need to recess? Tom, what do you think?
Tom, I wouldn't go less than 10 minutes, but I don't know that we need 20. What do you think?
I think that's probably reasonable, yes.
Think we can cover it in 10?
I'd go 15. What's the difference with you?
Gotcha. Yep, fair enough.
So is there a motion to recess into executive session until 10:15? Wait, is that right? 10:20? 10:20? 10:20? Anyone?
Yep. I'm motioning we go into executive session to 10:20. Is that what you need?
Well, I think we actually, when it comes to executive session, we usually have to read the exception.
Just read it, it's on there. I would move to recess into executive session pursuant to employer-employee negotiations, exception KSA 75-4319 V3, in order to discuss issues related to 2021 contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. The open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at 10:20.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.